All right, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 18th, 2018, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Reverend Moore McPhill, give us our indication.
Let's pray. Most gracious and loving Lord, we give you praise. We thank you for your glorious blessings of life and for the opportunity to meet together and to exercise this privilege and responsibility of governance. Please bless these, your servants, as they meet together, that by your might and power they may be able to discern the best course. We thank you for the light of conscience that shows us the difference between good and evil, and we pray that you may grant to us the ability to follow you in the good. But oftentimes, we recognize, Lord, that both ways can seem good, and we pray in those circumstances that you'll give discernment and leading to choose the best way. And so we commit to you all things, praying that you will grant to us the ability to discern truth and to give you praise and glory for the outcome. We ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Next, we'll move to public comment. I don't have anyone signed up this evening for public comment, but if you'd like to make one, please come forward. You can't hear me? It's because he puts it down too low. All right. Public comment. Anybody want to come up for public comment? All right. If not, we'll move to constituent concerns. Mike?
You know, I just wanted to give, uh, one of our commissioners, Carlisle Ferguson, died a few weeks ago, and I just wanted to let his family know that I appreciate him and all his work. And, um, for, you know, Brandon and I were Republicans, and, uh, he was like, uh, he paved the way to let me and Brandon know in a way that it was okay for us to run for office. So, uh, he was kind of a, you know, kind of a leading force in that. So, uh, but I just wanted to let his family know that we give them our condolences, and we appreciate all his hard work. He had worked for, uh, I think Soil and Water, I think that group, for 45 years. So he definitely gave us an example to live by, and, uh, and I appreciate that.
That's all. Thank you, Kevin. Phil?
I don't have anything.
No, none today.
And I'd like to support Kevin's statements as well. Carlisle was on the board when I first started in 2002, and I served with him for two years and sat right beside him. And so he kind of took me under his wing and, uh, and helped me figure things out and, uh, always had a very reasonable outlook about the way to make decisions for the county and was always looking out for the best interests of the county as well. Next is administrative agency reports. We don't have any. And we've got discussion and adjustment to the agenda. And there is one adjustment to the agenda, and that is we are removing item 10. That would just be deleted. That was, uh, a town of Waynesville request. So we'll move to the consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is to request approval of June 4th, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Anyone have any changes to those minutes? Uh, if not, I'll ask Greg West to come forward to request approval of the May 2018 refunds releasing, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Greg?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to request approval of the May 2018 releases, refunds, discoveries, and amendments, please.
Okay. Any questions about that, Commissioners? All right. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Mike Matthews coming forward with 2000, May 2018 tax collections update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our current collection as of May 31st, 2017 is 96.69 percent, still up a little bit from this time last year, and our delinquent balance is $2,175,436.
Greg, Commissioners, any questions?
I got a question. I was looking on page two of that report, and like in 2015, we show collecting 38 million 250, and then this year it's-
That can't be right. That's gotta be a misprint.
Okay.
I would, I would think it would almost have to be, because there wasn't that much to collect then.
Okay.
I just noticed it when you said it, but yeah, it's gotta be a misprint.
Okay. Well, okay. So, yeah, I was wondering why that was less.
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
I mean, that's, that's more than now, but yet the rate's higher, so that's what I was-
Right. That's, that's all I'm saying. It's gotta be a misprint.
Okay. Um, how do you, how do you calculate the collection rate? What numbers do you usually use? Like, when you, like, if somebody wanted to look this up online and tell would they, what number, which one do you take the, in other words, to get that 96.69, what numbers do you use in that? Is it the top numbers on page one?
Oh, on page one? Well, the top number on, the top number on page one is what we have receivable, what we have total for the year. And then we use the rate after that. But there's a lot of different factors going, like GO1 and that sort of thing, where's, where's we get the actual collection rate.
But, so is, are the, the numbers that give you the collection rate, are they displayed here? Not all of them are? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, they're all explained, actually. I mean, this is what we finish out at, or this is on this page. This is what the numbers that we're at over here is where we started, where we're at payment was, is the second line, um, the releases and refunds, and then what's still available, and then the amount.
I was just wondering what the equation was. So do you take the, the 38,000, I mean, 38 million and divide it-
Well, the 39 million.
Yeah. And you add 1.3 to it and divide it by the 39 or something?
You could, I guess. It's in the, I mean, we do it in Excel, in my spreadsheet. I don't have the actual formula in my head.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of budget amendments. Julie Davis. Julie, I will let you just come forward, and then you can go through each one of them.
Good evening.
Evening.
Just have a few for you tonight, our budget amendments. The first one is an end-of-year cleanup type of budget amendment that we have been doing a few times already. This one totals $121,609. The, um, you'll notice the first couple of accounts are for the detention office. They have incurred more charges for overtime and then professional services, medical for inmate medical expense, and this is due to a couple of things. Overtime is because they've had quite a lot of training that's been going on. They're having some detention certifications and that kind of thing. And when, when, um, they're out, they have to be filled with other people that are there. So they get some overtime for that. And the medical is actually mostly due to one particular inmate who is in a pre-trial basis that had to be sent, um, to the State Department of Corrections for medical reasons. And even though that this person is, um, not here, they're in Raleigh for medical reasons, Haywood County, and any county that has an inmate in this situation, has to pay for the medical expenses, and this particular one really has incurred quite a few medical expenses. So that's, those are the two reasons for the largest one there, from the detention. Those are things that are really, especially the medical, that are out of our control. We really, we never know if that's gonna happen. If you go on down the page, the transportation is for our, our rope funds for elderly and disabled. That's Rural Operating Assistance Program. This has a direct revenue related, is $15,609, and you'll see a revenue coming in. We're getting a little bit more money than we expected for that, and it's, it's a pass-through. We send that straight through to Mountain Projects. After that, you're gonna see the Health and Human Services. There's gonna be a reallocation between two departments. So where we reduced, um, one department, we're increasing another for a net of, for a total of 32,000. And the last one on there is ABC revenues. Our ABC revenues that we send 50% to the schools are coming in higher than we expected, so of course we have to send 50% of that to the school system. And that's the first one. Do you have any questions on that one? I'd be glad to answer if you do before I move on.
Commissioners, any questions?
I just want to make a comment. We have to, by court, I guess Supreme Court says we have to-
By statute, we have to pay for, if you're talking about the inmate medical, yes.
The inmate medical. We have to pay for that.
Yes, we have to. That we certainly do.
Because the courts and the law says we have to, so.
Exactly.
Because that bothers me to do that, but, okay. We're, we're following the law.
This, this one in particular is pre-trial, so he hasn't been convicted yet.
Okay. Still.
Does it change? Oh, sorry, Mike. Go ahead.
Obviously, I guess they, they can't get the medical service here because they're incarcerated and they have to be at a, at a facility that's got med, incarcerated, or a jail that has-
There, there are two reasons usually that a, a person has to go someplace else. One is for security, and one is for medical reasons, and apparently these medical reasons are of a serious enough nature. He has to be in, um, in Raleigh. Actually, the medical expenses are incurred from the Chapel Hill Medical Center.
Julie, does it change after their trial? I mean, say they're charged, is their responsibility changing?
If they get convicted and they go to the Department of Correction, that they're not on us any longer.
Okay.
Ready to move on? Okay. The next one is, you'll recognize this, it's a $3,350,000 budget amendment, and all this is, is a USD loan proceeds coming in to pay off a construction loan that we had for the animal shelter. So it's a revenue and expense for the exact same amount, which nets to a zero expense, so to speak, in our general fund. But we do need to show this as we're paying off one loan and getting proceeds for the, the new USDA loan.
You have any questions about that, Commissioners? Okay.
The next budget amendment is, you'll remember this one, is Central Haywood High School Access Controls. The, um, school system came to us and asked for you to apply for some ADM funds, average daily membership funds, and they were approved from Department of Public Instruction. Once they're approved by the Department of Public Instruction, we go ahead and put it in the budget so that we can expend these as the bills come in. This is a $55,000 project, and county funds are $13,750, which we already had sitting in a capital project fund, because we knew we'd have something coming in that we would have to match. This is that ADM, 25% county match, 75% state.
All right. Any questions?
Just, that just about ends the ADM.
It just about does. There's only about $32,000 left in the ADM fund, sitting in Raleigh, that we would have to match.
For the, for the public out there, you know, the ADM, the state has, they quit that several years ago, and, you know, part of the, uh, deal was that they provided that money back to the schools, but the county had to match 25%. So this, this ADM money's kind of been sitting over there since, uh, and been dwindling down every year.
It has been dwindling down quite a bit, as the school has projects that they, they are bringing on.
All right.
And that's the end of the budget amendments, but I do have an agenda request for a contract approval. This is for the, um, North Carolina Forest Service. We assign a contract for them on an annual basis, and they provide fire protection service in, in the forest areas in Haywood County. What we have here represents the, actually the same amount of split. It's a 60-40 split, 60,000 state, 40,000 county, and the 40% for the county is 60% and 40%. I think I said 40,000.
That's okay.
It's 60-40. You knew what I meant. The 40% is 110,000 for the county, and we have this budgeted. We knew this amount going into our budget process. So we're approving this, um, contract now that it's budgeted. And we do have someone from the Forest Service here, if you have any questions. I'm sure Matt Hooper would be glad to answer them for you.
Commissioners, have any questions about this agreement?
This, this is yearly thing. I mean, we've done this.
It's a yearly thing, yes. We do this every year.
Same amount as last year?
It's not the same dollar amount. It's still a 60-40 split. This is a little bit higher than last year's.
Okay.
And this is one that we, we don't always end up spending the entire amount. We get billed on a monthly basis, depending on how much they, Forest Service has to go out and fight fires, and sometimes it comes in a little bit lower. Since we've been having so much rain, it could very well come in a little bit lower.
So is this amount an estimate of what it could be, and then it's refunded back if it's not spent?
It's, it's an estimate of amount of what it should be, and, um, we get a different amounts each month, and we just don't pay it. It's not that it gets refunded back. We just don't, they bill us, and we pay what they bill us.
Okay.
And it's generally a little bit less than what the, um, total dollar amount is.
Do you recall what last year's was?
It was about 90-something thousand. It was a little bit under this one.
90-something thousand?
Yes, instead of 110.
That was our portion last year.
Our portion, yes. Our portion.
And, I guess, I mean, this is built into the budget.
Yes, it certainly is.
So you, we know it early enough to where you can build in.
We do. We know it early enough, and occasionally, there's some capital built into this one. In this particular year, I think they do have a vehicle, uh, in, as part of this, too.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Julie. After that, I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously. There is no old business. We'll move to new business. First item of new business is request approval of certification as to availability of local budget support and funds as it relates to the estimated operating utility annual costs associated with Haywood Community Colleges' proposed Connect NC Bond-Funded Capital Improvement Project Number 2416, Health and Human Services Building. We have Breck Lanning, HCC Director, Campus Development and Campus Architect, and Karen, Karen Denny here as well, HCC Vice President of Business Operations. That might be one of the longest introductions that we've done. Go ahead, Brett.
We pretty much covered it. Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. This is a, a request for certification for local budget support for our upcoming Connect NC Bond-Funded Project. This project, we prioritize based on just our educational needs, programmatic needs at the college. The building will house our Health and Human Services programs. Currently, they're in a building that's about 10,000 square feet. It's, um, has, they've really outgrown that space. They're using, having to go to our satellite campus at the High Tech Center to do some of their classes, because they've exceeded the, uh, capacity size of classrooms we've got on campus. So within this new space, we can gain them several thousand square feet, and allow them to have some of the spaces, lecture hall-type spaces, that they need for that program. The, we have based this, uh, estimated cost for operating and maintenance costs on our most recent building, Public Services Training Facility. Uh, the classroom portion of that building is roughly equivalent in size to what this classroom building would be, so that gives us some pretty good numbers as far as estimated utility costs. So we've based it on that, and with that, we're coming up with around 54,000, little over 54,000, um, dollars annually for the, uh, maintenance and utility costs on that structure. So, uh, our, our Board of Trustees approved this, um, proposal at their June board meeting, and with confirmation of support from you all, we will then submit this 3-1 to the State Board of Community Colleges for their approval, and then we can move on with the process for soliciting architects for that design.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
So, we're, we're basically just kind of approving the, the idea to move forward with this, that you are-
Correct. Yeah, that's, the 3-1 for the community college system requires that we get local budget sup, at least just a, uh, it's basically just a blessing that you're in support of us moving forward with the project, and that we will be requesting a, a budget increase whenever we get the structure done, which is probably going, estimated to be around 2022. Um, so, and with this, what our plan is, is it would open up the current building that they're in, and that's gonna give us the, the opportunity then to maybe move kind of a domino effect of moving some other programs into some bigger spaces, and allow us to do more with, with less, is what we're going for, so.
And Commissioners, just to make sure that you're aware, this is the building that you want to place on the, the armory property, correct?
Uh, we've talked about that. We're currently looking at placing this at the old, it's, it's actually at the old Creative Arts Building site, the one that was demoed.
Okay.
It's what we're looking at now. That's obviously not set stone until we get a little bit further into the project, but we have entertained, uh, entertained putting it down there at the old armory-
Okay.
-property, but currently, we're, we're leaning towards that old Creative Arts Building site.
Okay. So approving this isn't, we're not necessarily approving that plan, but I want to make sure the Commissioners are aware of that one way or the other.
Right, right. Currently, it'll be on our main campus property.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So, so we're also in, in, in the end game, though, we're, we're approving that we will help to maintain this building.
Correct.
So.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know if you all have walked through. I walked through the, this is the, mainly the nursing program.
Right.
Is that right? And, and walked through the facility that they have the nursing program in now, and, you know, there's a great demand for, for nurses, uh, especially with the hospital, and the hospital has, has kind of partnered and really shown a lot of interest in the Community Colleges program with nursing, and so, uh, it, it's an economic driver as well.
And, and reading this, too, I understand that that will free up some space for potential early college, which I'm assuming is probably at, kind of at a maximum.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's kind of our hope, is, uh, that, that, that'll allow us probably to gain them around another 2,000 to 3,000 square feet as well, if we move them down to that other building, uh, which we're looking at, you know, doing some maybe minor, minor upfits to it to, to allow them. So it's gonna, gonna give us a whole lot more bang for the buck, really, um, to do that, get them out of that building.
I guess you said that the board had talked about this. I guess they're okay with it. I see two of the, fine board members sitting in the back, back there.
Correct. Yeah, we have to get their approval before we come forward to you all, and they approve that at their June 5th board meeting.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the certification as to availability of local budget support and funds in the request that was submitted by Breck in the, uh, capital improvement through the Connect North Carolina Bond, um, Fund for the Health and Human Services Building.
So move.
Second. There's the first and the second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next is request approval of roadway easement to provide additional access over the armory parking lot to connect with Vocational Drive on Haywood Community College Campus. Leon Key, Leon Chip Key, and our county attorney with that presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members, this is something that implements, a request that the college had some time back, right after the county acquired the armory property, and it simply gives the, the college an access and easement across the existing driveway that runs along the edge of the parking lot there and on the armory, at 45 feet in width. The maintenance would be done jointly between the college and the, and the county, or whoever takes the property over from the county in the future. And then they would have the, the, the opportunity to extend the driveway an additional 50 or so feet from where it ends now. There's a gate there now, so they could, they could connect with Vocational Drive. This gives the college an additional means of access onto the campus from State Road, uh, 1949, and it's, I think, a safety issue more than anything else, fire safety and that sort of thing. So this fulfills a request we've had from the college for some, going some time back.
Commissioners, have any questions about that? I think this is, this is one of the things when we met with the community colleges, that they were, they wanted to have a connectivity through that armory area, and it is, I mean, it is not, actually, it physically does connect. I think they need to make some, uh, improvements to it to make it more fluid through there, but-
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't totally connect. There's, there's a, there's a gate there, but they'll have to, so they'll have to build a little extension of the driveway over to Vocational Drive, but it's not a very, great distance at all.
Yeah. I, I mean, I know there's a gate there, but I mean, it's-
Have to build, have to build a little bit more roadway there, but not a lot.
Yeah, it's not much.
Is that going in the back? I mean, you go through the parking lot all the way to the back.
Yeah.
Is that the gate? Did I see it back there?
Oops. Yeah. Yeah. My, so, Mr. Chairman, I had discussed this with the attorney, Pat Smothers, and he has approved the agreement. All right. This is something we had talked about with the board and actually indicated that, I believe, most of us were willing to do this. Any other questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the roadway easement attached as Exhibit 8 to allow connectivity through the armory parking lot to Vocational Drive for Haywood Community College.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to request approval of contract renewal for legal services rendered by David Weejay Wickarama, attorney for the Haywood County Sheriff's Office in the amount of 31,250 to be paid from sheriff's office budgeted funds. We don't. We've got our sheriff, Greg Christopher, here with us, and Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes.
Hey, thank you, gentlemen. I'm gonna let the chief talk to you about these renewals and our contracts. I just wanted to say before that he began, uh, my dad passed away a couple weeks ago. Every one of you gentlemen have been so kind to me, as well as the department heads here within this county, along with all of the county employees, and, uh, I just wanted to say how much that I really appreciate this. It's such a blessing to be in a family like our county, and I just wanted to say thank you so very much.
Thank you. And again, we're sorry for your loss, Greg.
Good evening, gentlemen. I come before you this evening looking for, uh, approval, uh, for the renewal of legal services rendered, or the contract for legal services rendered by David Weejay Wickarama. He's an attorney for the Haywood County Sheriff's Office in the amount of 31,250 dollars to be paid for, uh, out of sheriff's office's budget, budgeted funds for the upcoming fiscal year.
All right. Commissioners, have any questions? And David's been your attorney for several years now?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract for the renewal of legal services with David Weejay Wickarama as presented by Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. You've got number, you just carry on. You've got number four.
Yes, sir. I'll, I will apologize for the lengthiness of my request this evening, so I'll move through them fairly quickly. The next is the, uh, request for approval of a resolution honoring Deputy Mike Davis for his five years of law enforcement service, awarding of his issued badge and sidearm. Mike came to us after a retirement already from the state of North Carolina, has provided great service as a school resource officer, and just recently retired. So with that resolution, you should have in front of you, it says, "Whereas Deputy Mike Davis joined the Haywood County Sheriff's Office as a deputy sheriff in the Civil Process Division, and as a school resource officer as well. officer as well. Whereas Deputy Mike Davis's service and dedication to the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, uh, and his accomplishments in the field of law enforcement during the last five years of, uh, total service, excuse me, are hereby recognized and commended. And whereas under North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2, provides that retiring officers from the Haywood County Sheriff's Office may receive at the time of their retirement the badge worn or carried by them during their service with Haywood, with Haywood County. And whereas under North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2, further provides that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners may in its discretion award to a retiring officer the service sidearm of such retiring officer at a price determined by the Board of Commissioners upon securing a permit as required by North Carolina General Statute 14402. Whereas Deputy Mike Davis has served as a member of the Haywood County Sher, Sheriff's Office and is retiring from the Sheriff's Office on 15 June 2018. It is now, uh, now therefore be it resolved by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners as follows. Sheriff Greg Christopher is hereby authorized in accordance with the provisions of General Statute 20-187.2 to transfer to Deputy Mike Davis the badge worn by him during his service with Haywood County Sheriff's Office. And Sheriff Greg Christopher is hereby authorized in accordance to the provisions of N C General Statute 20-187.2, to transfer to Deputy Mike Davis his service firearm at, at a cost to Deputy Mike Davis determined as 75% of the market value, uh, which totals $306.75, uh, and upon the securing of a permit as required by General Statute 14402. Be it therefore the resolve that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners recognizes and thanks Deputy Mike Davis for his dedicated service to the Haywood, to Haywood County and its citizens adopted this 18th day of June 2018."
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions about that resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented by Chief Deputy Haynes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen. And, uh, for item number five, to, I'm gonna be, go through this list of, of renewals of contracts for the upcoming fiscal year, uh, operational contracts, and I'll stand for any questions as well.
And Jeff, these are all renewals of contracts. It, did, if any of these end, uh, the entities changed?
Uh, no, sir. They have not. They are, uh, one, one actually changed only in name, um, and that would be Mobile Communications, uh, America, uh, but it is exactly the same service provider. They just changed their vendor names. They've changed no services. They're still providing.
Okay.
That, and, and this will allow that continuity of services.
All right. Go ahead.
So our request approval for the following sheriff's office annual contracts for the fiscal year 2018-19. The first is Southern Software. It's the annual agreement for 911 communications for CAD, which is computer aided dispatch, mapping, addressing, uh, a dashboard, which, uh, is a statistic based, uh, data collection unit, MDIS, which is mobile dat, data terminals for our in-car, uh, computer systems, and alphanumeric paging for the total amount of $46,103 to be paid for from sheriff's office funds 11 and 23. Those are, specific funds are, are funded back through the 911 board and the 911 surcharge.
Okay. Commissioners, questions about that one? All right.
Second is Mobile Communications America, the annual agreement for 911 communications for radio equipment on our mountaintops and, and the call center, uh, for the total amount of $42,095.38 to be paid for out of sheriff's office budgeted funds. Uh, this is a, uh, fund to keep the mountaintop repeater sites, uh, up and moving and the, the support that goes along with that, to include hard, hardware as well.
All right. Any questions, commissioners? Okay.
The third is for Kimball's Commissary. It's the annual agreement for the detention center for lockdown software, uh, for our inmate debit cards, our jail ATM, and booking manager, et cetera. That is a, a revenue stream and that is, uh, a, the Kimball's Commissary basically is a service provided for the inmates and paid for, uh, by those that utilize it. And there is a charge that goes along with each use of that. The lockdown piece is actually the piece that manages the fiscal piece of the, uh, or fiscal software that manages the fiscal piece of the detention offices, uh, um, budget, I suppose would be a good way of putting it, as far as inmate accounts are concerned.
All right. Commissioners, have any questions about that? Next?
The next is Southeast Correctional Medical Group, um, annual agreement for the detention center for medical services in the amount of $220,420, to include a $30,000 cost pool, uh, for a total of $250,420 to be paid, uh, from sheriff's office budgeted funds as well, too. That is for, uh, any and all inmate care, uh, for those, uh, from the moment that they're booked into the, to the detention center, the, the county becomes responsible, responsible for their, for their medical needs.
Jeff, have any of these contracts changed substantially in amounts?
Actually, uh, none have changed. Uh, well, there, there was a small change in Southeast, but it's a very minimal change.
Okay.
There's the $30,000 cost pool still is in effect, uh, as well, too, uh, which could pick up the difference. It's almost like a, a stopgap on, for the billing purposes as well, too, so.
Okay. All right.
And those are all projected off of, uh, our current year and what we project to look at.
Okay. And commissioners, do you have any questions about that one? Southeast Correctional Medical Group, group. All right. Go ahead.
The next is Combined Public Communications Annual Agreement for the Detention Center for Inmate Phone Services. That is phone services and, uh, and email services as well, too, which are provided for and at a, that is a revenue stream as well back to the county, for the extensive use of, of phone services.
All right. Any questions about that, commissioners? Okay.
And, uh, last is, uh, last is Cisco, uh, out of Knoxville, and that is the annual agreement for the Detention Center inmate food services in the amount of $166,000 to be paid for through sheriff's office budgeted funds and obviously those for the food services provided to the inmates, uh, based upon North Carolina Jail, uh, administrators, or the Jail Association Guidelines and General Statute.
All right. Commissioners, have any questions about that agreement? Okay. And Jeff, you are requesting that we approve all of these contracts and, and you and the sheriff and who, the powers that be have discussed this and you making the request and, and agree with these contracts as well?
Yes, we have discussed them. We've discussed them, uh, independently with the vendors, and we've also discussed them with the county attorney, Mr. Keyian, as well, too.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, commissioners?
So we got four detention, uh, six, six in all, four, four detention and two overall communication, right?
That, that, that's correct. Two, two of the communications go back to the, to the, uh, the foundational support for the 911 system for the county, and the other four are through the detention center. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I will entertain a motion to approve the annual contracts, um, as described by Chief Deputy Jeff, Jeff Haynes, uh, in item number five of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. That passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next is request approval of updated emergency medical service fee schedule for fiscal year 2018-19. Travis Donaldson, Deputy Director of Emergency Services, is with us this evening. Travis, how are you?
Good. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, have before you this afternoon is the request of approval for the updated fee schedule. Uh, we went back and looked. EMS has not increased the fee schedule, uh, charged to the, the patients that we provide medical care to since 2009. Uh, doing a little research, speaking to our, um, our billing company, um, neighboring agencies, best practice seems to be to revisit this every year. Medicare, Medicaid updates their fee schedules on an annual basis. It's come out the first of every year, um, in January. Um, we had quite a bit of ground to make up this year, um, considering it'd been eight years since they had last been looked at. Um, I think Mr. Mashburn presented this, uh, in a couple of the budget work sessions. Um, it's attachment 17, uh, for y'all.
All right. We have, uh, discussed this a couple times, I believe at a work session.
Just the ambulance stuff and all.
Right.
Actually, kind of with the Medicare, Medicaid.
Yeah.
What we saw in the work session, about same numbers, right?
Yes, sir. They, they are the same numbers, correct.
And you said that going forward, y'all are gonna reevaluate this every year?
We're, we're on, we'll look at it every January, February, February, whenever the actual fee schedule comes out from Medicare, Medicaid, and, um, look at it and adjust it to there. It, it, this allows us to, to get the maximum amount of reimbursement from primary insurances. Medicare, Medicaid's only gonna pay a certain amount, but these primary insurances will pay percentages that are negotiated, but it allows us to, to maintain the maximum reimbursement for, for the services that we provide.
What? ALS, E and E. What's that?
Uh, non-emergent, ALS, Advanced Life, Advanced Life Support, Non-Emergent. Those are, those are medical codes. It depends on, uh, what kind of procedures, how many medications we give, to what classifications those fall into. It's how they, they code it medically.
Okay. All right. Uh, I will entertain a motion to request approval of the updated emergency medical service fee as presented by Travis Donaldson.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Travis. Next is request approval for the county manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Haywood County.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This is a request, uh, for the county manager to sign this written agreement, which is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 108A-74. It is the first time that they are having an agreement, uh, such as this between the, um, local government and the State Department of Health and Human Services. A few, uh, points, the agreement is 20 pages long. I'm just gonna go, cover a, a very few points to begin with. Uh, first, we have a lot of dedicated public servants out at Health and Human Services who are doing their best to make sure that, uh, the children and adults are protected, that, uh, people have access to, uh, the means to get food and medical care, and they'll continue to do their best, uh, to make sure things are met. Um, second, that, uh, this was, a prior version of this was discussed with the Health and Human Services Board. The versions of this were evolving so fast that between their last meeting of the Health and Human Services Board in May and now, and they'll meet again tomorrow for their next meeting, there have been two additional versions of this contract. The one you have in front of you is the latest. So there are some, uh, differences, and I think some of those differences, uh, will help. Three, um, I was in a meeting last, uh, week in Raleigh, and one of the things, uh, that was discussed, and we were in the meeting with some of the state folks that would be enforcing this, uh, they, they essentially said that whether we signed it or not, we're gonna be held accountable for these things. And like I, I said, some of these benchmarks we're familiar with. Some of them, uh, would be new creations, but for the most part, they're things we have seen before. Um, and they also said that if we did not sign, it would most likely be considered a violation of law because there was a general statute voted, so we have no choice but to sign. Uh, the reason for the signatory being the county manager is there is a provision in here that talks about paybacks and, uh, the potential for paybacks, uh, including your federal funds and state funds, and my authority would not be to bind the county to any such things. Uh, so they, they also are basically saying that we need someone from the county that can bind the county to, uh, all of the terms in this agreement. Um, the main things in the contract itself, um, if you look at it, there's responsibilities spelled out for the Department of Health and Human Services and their responsibilities spelled out for the county. And again, I would note it's listed as the county and not the, necessarily just the county social services, although most of the performance measures will be performed by the two divisions, uh, in the Social Services Department. Those responsibilities have to do with staffing and workforce development, uh, how we protect data, doing all of the performance measures that are attached, and, uh, our communication with the state and our inter-agency cooperation. Those are the primary, just broad categories. Then there are performance measures that cover most of the areas, uh, that would be considered social services except for Medicaid. There's a whole nother stream of stuff going on with the Medicaid program, and I imagine there will be a lot coming out of Medicaid transformation that discusses our practice down the road. Um, but for right now, it has such things as child welfare measures, child support measures, and those kinds of things. I'll be happy to address any questions. Uh, one other thing to keep in mind, I could not give you real-time updates because we would not have access to a lot of the data to do that. A lot of that is in state systems, and they're gonna have to provide reports. Um, and they know that. So I can tell you guesses about where we are if you were to ask today about the performance measures, but I couldn't 100% state with accuracy.
But these are the performance measures that you are, uh, used to comply with right now?
Some of them.
Okay.
For example.
Well, do you, is there any, you think we have any problem complying with these standards? I mean, cause we're, when we sign it, we're agreeing to do that, right?
Uh, we're gonna be bound to this whether you sign or not. Um, right now, I can tell you that.
Well, then, does it really matter?
If you don't sign, you're not complying with the law. So you asked the question, and I won't duck it. Uh, you have to work very hard every month to, uh, meet the kind of goals. Some of these are like 95% visitation face to face.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna add. I mean, everything's 95 or 96%. Do we have enough people to make sure all the performance measures are complete? I mean, that's what bothers me. It's easy to put a number down, but 95, 96% on all these measures is unforgiving.
It's unforgiving. Um, there's a section in there, one of the things that, uh, some of us pointed to the attention of the state where there are a lot of factors on some of these measures that are completely outside our control. There are measures, uh, you know, if you're saying how fast are you gonna hit your timeliness on food nutrition, well, we have a high degree of control in that, and even there, you might not get everything you need out of the system to get them processed timely. There are other measures where you, we have much less control when you start talking about court measures, but those they changed from, some of those they changed, which were the ones that we were really concerned with, uh, absolute performance measures to what they're calling system measurements or goal targets for the whole state to try and move towards. Um, so to answer your questions, one, will we be able to meet this every month? Some of these we already hit. Some of these, uh, although they are excellent, uh, aspirational goals, we don't necessarily hit.
Is there a penalty if we don't hit them?
Potentially, yes. If we, that's why, that's why I'm here. Potentially, yes. Uh, if you look at.
Well, are we penalized now when we don't meet them?
Uh, no. In, in the kinds of targets we're talking about, child welfare, I'll give you one, for example, um, we are not necessarily penalized now, no. And some of them, you know, theoretically, if you miss a, if we were to flub a case, Medicaid is not one of the requirements. We could have a payback. Um, but they're not talking about paybacks here. They're talking about withholding of funding for not meeting targets.
I know that during, uh, I'm the commissioner, sits on the HHS board, and I know during our last meeting, there was a lot of concern, uh, from the leaders of us hitting these numbers. And, uh, it's almost like it's, that we can't achieve it. So, uh, I don't know what we need to do, uh, if we can go back to the state or what, to try to change some of the, the way that they measure these numbers, I think was a big question. Am I right? I, I.
Definitely. And in, in the prior version, some of the things that are the aspirational goals of the state were hard and fast goals, and we would've had a lot of difficulty with some of those. You're, you're dead on accurate for our conversation.
Just like foster care, there was a 95%, uh, you have to visit all those children within a 30-day period, within a month?
Every month, we have to visit, uh, at least 95% of them face to face.
I don't know how many that is, but that's, that's pretty good workload right there.
Yes. To, to make sure we get out and see and lay eyes on the kids, 95%. And when you consider where the kids are geographically spread in the state of North Carolina, uh, we, we spend some time on the roads. So, again, it goes to, is it a good policy? Yes. Is it a good aspirational goal? Yes. Is it gonna possibly cost us down the road for some of these? Yes. You asked the question.
Are all the counties having to comply with this?
Yes.
Yeah, they are. And from what I understand, too, a lot of them is upset as well, you know, with the way that.
I can't imagine some of the counties are gonna have a tough time.
Well, we're, we're actually in pretty good shape. I mean, if you compare us to other counties. I mean, if you compare us to other counties. But at the same time, they're upset as well. I mean...
Yeah. We're, we are in, we are in pretty good shape in terms of meeting most of these goals. And like that 95% face-to-face, we have been considered as meeting that for this year, I was told. I asked for the numbers on which ones, because I wanted to know which ones would we have the most trouble with. Like I say, I have a lot of people out there dedicated to do their best.
I just hate to see goals put out there that's really almost impossible to meet. You're setting yourself up for failure right off the bat, Dana.
I mean, if we want to set goals, or if we could set goals to make us improve or get better, it's one thing, but setting a goal that you can't achieve, you know?
Can't achieve and...
Setting yourself up for failure, so...
And then, but, I mean, you have to sign, because if you, if you don't, you're in violation of state rules and regulations.
You would be in violation of state law. I have the, actually printed that...
So basically, what's going to happen is, is everybody's going to have to sign this, and they're going to have a lot of trouble meeting it, and they'll end up changing.
I'm going to work through. Some places put together long signing statements, some county, about their difficulties to meet. I didn't design a long signing statement because I think, again, the protection of the children and the making sure people get the services that they deserve is paramount, and that if we need to have measures to do that, I think that that's a good thing. And I think that we all need to work together as a state and local entity to try and push towards meeting those measures. So the question becomes, how do we enforce that everybody is doing that? And how do we measure? And how do we look at them and make sure that's happening? And some of these, like the 95%, I'm very familiar with. It took a, it took a little while. That one's been around enough, long enough that I was, when I was the DSS director previously, it had come into play. And it took us a little while to bring up to that, but we consistently are able to do that. It's not easy, but we're consistently able to do it. Have to do a little more logistical shuffling.
It kind of sounds, I mean, it's different, but similar when they changed the North NC Fast or whatever, when they did that, and they laid it all out, and everybody had to work really, really difficult, really hard to even, get even close to where it was.
That does concern me. When they roll out NC Fast and child welfare, we're going to have to come up, and this is where there may be a lot of pressure locally and possibly some additional things. If they roll that out locally and it does not have more capacity than when they rolled out NC Fast for food and nutrition, we flatlined on productivity and not, you know, when that system rolled out, because it's just, it was not at the time sufficient.
Right.
It's still not optimal for what kind of technology is out there in the world, but it is, it was not at all sufficient at the time.
Yeah.
And so there, you know, but they have a thing in there that says that we can use those kinds of things to discuss with the state if we feel that is what's holding us back. But we keep our, we're keeping our eye on the fact that we want to serve people, and if these are the measures that they want to hold out there for transparency, we'll do our best.
All right. Do you, do you guys have an opinion?
We've, we've had a lot of discussions about this, and we've had standards before. This is not the first year that we've had standards that we've had to meet, correct?
That would be correct. Some of these benchmarks, like the food nutrition or the child support standards are out there. That is correct.
And what has been the process that has been used in years past as far as getting approval of this memorandum of understanding or established in the standards?
This is a brand-new memorandum. Before, we just had individual standards into different programs.
That was different programs, but you had standards for the programs.
Correct. There, but there were no memorandums or agreements on those. They simply like, you have a state consultant who comes in and, and health department has a lot of, like, has had for years, the standard agreements. But this is the first one like this for us. They have the standards, they usually are imposed by the state, and they'll come in with the, what they call them is either local business liaisons or local consultants, or program representatives, who will talk about the different things like food nutrition goals or child support goals with us. And they set out six benchmarks, or the benchmarks in child support we're familiar with, because if we meet them, we get incentive monies. Those are, so it was a positive incentive, and we usually meet them.
If we don't meet these goals, and the state says, you have, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services say, you don't, you haven't met these goals, whose responsibility is it to hire the necessary employees to fulfill the goals? And do we still get money from the state, or is it all county money? Or do we know the answer to that question?
Oh, I know the answer. And when you, when you hire employees, depending on the program you hire them in, there's different levels of reimbursement. So if the question becomes, it's going to be incumbent on the county, the money for almost all of the employees out there is a mix of federal and county money primarily. Some of the positions have a little bit of state money thrown in. A lot of the money from the state that was tied up in the foster care pot of, pots of money. So their, their percentage overall of paying state money is almost 10%. I'll just round it to 10%. And the federal money comes in closer to 50%, and we pick up the rest, which is like 40-some percent. This year, our actual budget, I think, had 38% county money in it.
So the same, the same ratio would apply to every new employee that, that we have hired. I just want to make sure that we're not, I mean, it doesn't really matter, but we're not setting a standard where if we don't perform, and someone says, you've got to hire the employees to perform to meet that standard, and it's the county's responsibility alone to do that, but we still share the same proportionate, same proportion of salary for the additional employees.
If you told me to hire five Medicaid workers today, yes, we would go out, and there are some uncapped sources. I'm going to add the caveat that you're going to get into more county money in capped sources. So if those people happen to be in certain areas like adult protective services, you're going to wind up with more county money in it. If they happen to be in uncapped sources like Medicaid workers, Medicaid's not part of this contract, or food nutrition workers, that's an uncapped source that's part of this contract, you're going to be more in the, you'll get the mix in the, in that. So I am going to add that caveat. The more workers you add in adult services, we don't always get the ratios back on all those positions.
Okay. I don't know if we have much of a choice, but I'm open to suggestions.
It's almost crazy. I mean, we're, we've got a vote on it, and if you vote no...
Your board says do it.
Do what?
Your board says do it.
Well, the board is concerned as well. I mean, they're, they're...
They reluctantly voted for it.
Well, sure. They, they don't want to as well, because they know that there's goals that we can't meet, you know? But same, they're in the same position. What do you do? You know? That's what's frustrating.
But if, if, if all the counties have to do this, then all the counties are going to have the same problem we are, and probably have the same concerns that we do, and hopefully those will be addressed, because, you know, no, no county, it sounds like no county will be able to meet those standards.
Yes. The Health and Human Services Agency, there have been five drafts, so there, and, and some of the things they have backed off on are some of the biggest concerns, like there were some areas that it was clear there was a lot of outside influence on the numbers in child welfare. And, and they are listed out in that set of goals that they talk about being, what's the exact word they're using for them? System performance measures. That's what they're using for it, as opposed to performance measure. When they said system performance measure, they, they acknowledged that there's too much outside influence to just put that on the county. And then they did change a lot of the other language in here, and they added some more language to the appellate or to the ability, if, if something goes against us, if we, if we don't meet a goal, then we have the right within 10 days to list out reasons not related to the county as to why we didn't like, we got too many continuances in court that weren't related to that case for us or something.
It's kind of like an appeals deal.
Correct. We have the ability to work through that, and that's, that was added in one of the later iterations. I don't think it was in there when, when that went before DSS.
As a citizen, I would want tough standards for, for kids, because you're looking at, you know, you're looking at kids that are coming out of less than ideal situations to have to, to deal with, with everything, and I think we need to make sure that they're taken care of as, as good as we can. So in a way, I see why we have it, you know?
Yeah.
Flip side, because the main thing is to make sure that, that those young people are taken care of and adequately, and they're already going through, you know, a tough situation if they're in foster care.
I 100% agree. The main thing is to keep our eye on who we're serving.
Okay. After all that lengthy discussion, I suppose we don't have much of a choice.
Our, what we don't know is how tough the enforcement's going to be. I mean, we've had, had it a little bit in the past, but it's, you wonder if this memorandum is going to cause more of a, each county, each system being looked at more closely. And if we do that, we're getting caught in what we, with the, our school kids testing and all, you know? And improvement teams and all that. I guess it can go on and on.
I hope they will provide resources to, to help meet those measures, because you're right, we don't know beyond that, how the enforcement teams and what they're going to want to do beyond that. And it does, I mean, that's a good analogy, I think.
I think enforcement can get expensive for the state if they have to send in teams to counties that have a lot of problems. That's what if they had to do in education.
Ira, do we know if any other county has voted against this?
I don't know of any county that voted against it. Again, some counties put signing documents explaining why each of the measures would be difficult to meet or something like that. The way I looked at it was...
They're not giving you a choice.
That's right.
Not a try-curse, you can't.
All right. I'll entertain a motion that we approve that the county manager sign this memorandum of understanding between North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Haywood County.
I'll make that motion and... I won't say anything.
Make a motion. We just don't, I just don't want to be in violation of...
I was going to put reluctant in there, Kevin, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, and, you know, we really need, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind sending a letter stating that.
Yeah, I think so.
Airboard and Brandon's board's concerned that this, that this is an unattainable goal, but we feel like we have to do it.
That there may be some unattainable goals. Okay.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Reluctantly unanimously. All right. Michelle's been waiting patiently. Request approval of the following Health and Human Services Agency annual contracts. Michelle Haynes is the Business Services Director with Health and Human Services Agency, and we'll present those.
Yes. Good evening. I'm here today to ask for approval of three contracts in the upcoming fiscal year, 2018, 2019. And the first contract is with Champion Cab Company, and it's in the amount of $25,000, and it's for WorkFirst Transportation Services. And you may be asking, what is WorkFirst? WorkFirst is temporary assistance for needy families, and this program helps eligible recipients support themselves by offering short-term training and other resources, such as transportation, to increase their chances of employment. And this service is partially reimbursable with federal funds. So that's contract number one. The second contract we have is with Haywood Vocational Opportunities. It is in the amount of $72,000, and it is for job readiness, development, and training. That is also part of our WorkFirst program to offer those services, and it is partially reimbursable with federal funds as well. The last contract we have for approval today is Southwestern Child Development Commission. This amount is $192,141, and it's for subsidized childcare direct services and service of support. And we call this pass-through funding because we get the amount in and we send it back out, so it just kind of flows through our budget. So it is completely 100% reimbursable. So those are the three contracts we have that are over $20,000 that require Board of County Commissioner approval.
All right. Commissioners, any questions of Michelle?
Ms. Haynes, do you, do you know what part of reimbursement we get from federal on each one of those?
I do. For Champion Cab Company and Haywood Vocational Opportunities, that is part of our WorkFirst Federal Block Grant that we receive each year, and we have to meet a maintenance of effort amount, and that is an amount the county has to put forward toward that program. We're required to meet that threshold in order to receive the federal funds. So the amount the county has to put forward for our programs is $482,263, and that does not change. That remains the same each and every year. Once that is met, we receive the WorkFirst Block Grant funding, which is 100% federal funds, and we can receive that in the amount of $877,118. So for the entire program, the county funds that are required, as well as the federal funding, it's a total of $1,359,381 per year.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the Champion Cab Company contract, Haywood Vocational Opportunities contract, Southwestern Child Development Commission contract as presented by Michelle Haynes and attached as exhibit or item eight.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All right. That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is request approval of the lease agreements for the following household garbage recycling convenience centers. Chris Boyd's going to come forward, our Development and Facilities Services Director, and tell us about each one of those. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I have three lease renewals that I'm requesting approval for, for solid waste convenience centers. The first one is Highway 110 on Pisgah Drive for $6,000 annually. That's for a five-year lease that would automatically renew for an additional five years. The second is Jonathan Creek Convenience Center. That's $2,100 annually for a five-year lease with a renewal of five years. The third is the Jones Cove Convenience Center on Recycle Road. It's $7,800 annually with a five-year contract and, with a five-year term and renewal of five years.
All right. Commissioners, any questions about those? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the lease agreements as presented by Chris and the attachments 22 through 24 pursuant to item nine of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would also request that you allow the county manager to sign those leases, execute when we get those returned.
I'll add that to the motion.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously. Unanimously. As well. We need to have a four-one vote on something, just so I don't say unanimous.
We need to break that down with Brandon.
I think it should be something David presents.
I'm going to fix that.
Brandon's going to handle it.
I'll fix it.
You'll vote?
Okay. I can probably help you out with that.
All right. Next, we've got update on Jonathan Creek site preparation. This will be a good one, and a request approval of change order for rental of equipment by AFCON for the Jonathan Creek project.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening. Hope everybody's doing well and had a good weekend. The, for an update on what we had discussed at the last meeting of working through eight acres, looking at 12 acres and the difference in the cubic yards, since that time, we have negotiated with a property owner and have secured soil at below a dollar a cubic yard. We have engaged, further engaged the engineers with a new site plan with, you know, adding the additional 12 acres from the original eight and where the soil may come from, changed the perspective of that, since we were not seeking 70,000 cubic yards, that we had reduced it down to the 45,000 cubic yards. But with, part of that negotiation is that we allowed ourselves to access, you know, up to 60,000 cubic yards in case we needed it to further... know, up to 60,000 cubic yards in case we needed it to further decide, in case a business came in or needed some more soil, we latched on to that as well, too, at the time. So that's about as far as we've gotten with everything in the two weeks. So anticipate when, at the next meeting in July 16th, as we will not have a meeting over the July 4th holiday. So I think we'll have a lot more movement between now and then because we've got some testing to do with the additional acreage that we've added. And as we, you know, talked about this site before, it was a little wet. We think it is from surface water as opposed to groundwater. So we're going to test everything to make sure we're good to go there, not get any further complications on that.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions?
At that time, we'll be ready to try to get some bids on, all and all, we'll be ready to go with that.
Yes. We'll probably put everything together in that time and go out, you know, put it out to bid to see where those bids come in at. And then we'll bring all that back to... hopefully, we can get everything done between now and the 16th of July, I believe, is the second meeting in July. So try to get everything wrapped up by then before we know where we're going.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the change order for the rental of equipment by AFCON for the Jonathan Creek Project, the amount of $5,525.43.
What... let me... that was on the update for the soil that we had discussed. Let me explain.
That wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, there was an update, and then... so AFCON had... go ahead for the 4-1 now. The AFCON had purchased a piece of equipment with anticipation that we would start compacting the soil. When we negotiated everything out with MAB, we were ready to move in December. They had leased... sorry, I said purchased. They had leased some equipment, you know, for compaction. And so this cost represents what their expenses were at that time to compact the soil. And so that comes to an amount of $5,200 there. And I think this is a fair for what they had invested in and anticipating that we were proceeding on with the project and everything was in place. But as we've talked and thoroughly talked about with the... how wet the soil was that came from the Russ Avenue site, that it just would not work out.
All right, Commissioners, any questions about that? So this is for a compactor, is that what that is, David?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Did we not have it in the original cost?
The... it was part of their cost in the $167,000. It wasn't part of our cost. They had, you know, leased that with anticipation of getting the soil. So they had made certain expenses, you know, in anticipation of that they would be able to proceed with the contract at that time.
And we didn't get the dirt, so they couldn't do the work.
Yeah, couldn't do the work, yeah.
All right, Commissioners, any questions about that?
I mean, it's just that, you know, this is a cost that they... because we couldn't produce the dirt because the publics couldn't give us what we anticipated.
What we had bargained for. That we had bargained for.
What we thought we were going to get.
Yeah.
And what they told us we were going to get.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions? All right, now I'll go back to that motion. So I move Kevin to move to approve the change order for the rental of equipment of AFCON in the amount of $5,525.43. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Next is request approval for GNS fence to install a perimeter fence required for secondary containment at the Haywood County Animal Services Facility in the amount of $38,500.
Commissioners, we had discussed previously about the Animal Services Building, that the need for a second line of containment fencing. As you know, there is an outdoor facility there for the pets, dogs to be in. The second containment facility allows, you know, to us to meet the North Carolina Code for we needed a second perimeter fence out there. That's one aspect of it for the fence. The other is that when the construction started, there was a sediment basin that was put closer to the Jones Cove. And I think that it's very prudent that we put a fence around there. There's apartments across the road from there, and I think we need a fence around there for safety measures. You know, it's just simple. We have the same type of sediment pond at Mooney Cove, of course, and we fenced that around there. And I think this just is very... makes very much prudent sense to have this done at this time that we're doing the containment fence. So part of that fencing as well, too, is we're making sure as the fence goes up the line, that the longer fence will be from the side of the... left side of the building where the AC HVAC units are going up to the side, and will connect back onto the Duke side, on the right side of the facility as well, too. So that will give the second containment. And then if the Animal Services ever decides to put in a dog park up there as well, that we've discussed, it'd be kind of nice to have walking trails back in there because it's a nice wooded area. That fence will already be in place. We'll have that there, and that's something that we can work towards in the future there. So I just think that it's a good idea. And these funds are coming out of the contingency funds that we had left over. We had over $90,000 left over in contingency funds, just in case. So this will go... be paid for by that. The fence, you know, we'll want to put a gate there for the staff to be able to go in and out of the fence where they're not having to swing a gate as well, too. Make it electronic. Make it user-friendly for the staff as well, too.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, well, I mean, we talked about this a couple months ago.
We did.
And back when they were talking about moving the HVAC thing out of the front.
Correct, yeah.
And so we, you know, that was agreed to move forward on, so now you're doing it, so you're just bringing it to us.
Yeah, we got the three bids in, and GNS was the lowest of the bids there, so.
If I remember, the preliminary numbers were about the same.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were, correct, yeah.
That's what I was going to say. Looks like the numbers are fairly close. And it's something that if I understand the fencing, we have to do. We have to have that second layer of protection.
Yeah, the secondary containment area, yeah.
And this company with the fence is the one that installed the Mooney Cove, is that correct?
No, the SNS is the one that installed Mooney Cove. GNS is out of Asheville. SNS is out of Hendersonville. We solicited their bid as well, but they said they were covered up and didn't want to come back west, I guess, you know? But we had three very... we had two very competitive bids, you know, or two very... only $200... or they got $328 difference, very competitive. So this will, you know, get the building project about wrapped up. We've got one more item behind this we want to discuss, but we've had lots of good compliments on the building. The public's very happy. Doyle's getting settled in. You can talk to him. He's coming up here in a second. But was just out there today. Things went well.
Good. All right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the contract with GNS fence to install a perimeter fence as the amount of $38,500 as presented by David Francis.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously as well. Next is the request approved for Mobile Communications of America Incorporated to install antennas on the Haywood County Animal Services Facility to ensure adequate wireless communications coverage in the amount of $6,203.
Yeah. It's one of the things that we found as we were settling and moving into the businesses that we couldn't talk to each other. I'm calling Doyle, he's trying to call me, and we're not being able to get cell signal out at the building. Building has a metal roof. It's extremely heavily insulated. And then all the HVAC units that are in there, you know, we have several HVAC units, some that move air for the staff, some that moves air for the animals, some moves air for the sickbay animals. Because there's different levels of air handling system in there, and they're all in the roof. So we've not been able to get cell signal in there at all. We have to step outside, go to the parking lot to be able to get any cell signal at all. So Doyle, Joey and I got solicited to some bids to be able to acquire cell signal inside the building. And so we had received two bids. This was the lower of the two bids, by $1,700. This is also a company that we previously approved a contract with, with the Sheriff's Department. We have a standing relationship with this company as well, too. And Doyle can add to, you know, what issues are having.
Good evening, gentlemen. This also will move our base station for our CB radio communications for the field officer, so they'll be able to talk to each other and to the office. It'll move that from Hazelwood to the new facility, just using the current equipment that we already own. Any questions? Could you hear me?
Good, I like that.
Yeah. Now, what'd you say?
I'm going to start telling people to present things like that.
Basically, what I was saying was that we'll move our CB antenna base from Hazelwood to Jones Cove. That's included in this bid as well, as well as the cell phone signal. It's kind of like being at Lowe's, if you've been to Lowe's.
Yeah, can't get service inside the building.
That's...
All right. Doyle, do you expect any problems with the radio communication? I know you're having problems with the cell phone.
I don't think so because it's an exterior-mounted antenna, then it'll just be a cable ran inside, so we should be fine there. And we're actually closer to chambers from there, so I think we'll be in good shape.
Any other questions, Commissioners? This will also be taken out of contingency.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve that Mobile Communications of America install antennas to the Haywood County Animal Services Facility to ensure adequate wireless communications in the amount of $6,203 to be paid from contingency. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Next is request approval of budget amendment for the animal shelter in the amount of $49,353, which is a total of the two previous items on the agenda. We've got to move the money from the project contingency over to pay for it. Julie Davis is here to tell us about that.
I have the budget amendment for you, and we are taking the money from project contingency, which was $94,832. And after the $49,353, there'll still be $45,475 remaining. And you'll see the $38,500 for the fencing and the $62,030 for the equipment for the mobile communications, but there's a little bit more in there. There's some electrical work and some curbing and a little bit of surveying that is going to be going along with the fencing and finishing up the project to bring us up to that total amount.
All right, any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment for the animal shelter of $49,353 to cover the projects we talked about this evening.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously again.
Thank you.
All right. Next is request approval of contract amendment with Joel Mashburn, our interim county manager. We better extend the contract since we're having him sign all these things.
Mr. Chairman, members of our interim county manager, Mr. Mashburn, who we've enjoyed working with so much for the last... almost a year now. Unfortunately, his original contract was set to expire June 30th, and it said not... it could not extend past June 30th. So this amendment would now say that it cannot extend past October 31st. So he could technically stay as long as October 31st if he need... if it was needed. The other change that it would make is that in Section 3D, it had said that Mr. Mashburn would work no more than 1,000 hours in any calendar year. That was at that time a requirement under the state employee, state retirement system, which is now being changed. It's no longer a requirement. And so we want to delete that from his contract as well as extending it to later than October 31st.
Just an explanation, it's no longer required for what's called a statutory position, and they give a specific example of an interim city or county manager. I guess they found somewhere along the line that the 1,000 hour just didn't work in that particular circumstance. So they did amend it to allow a person working either as a system, meaning a city or county manager in an interim position could work more than the 1,000 hours in a calendar year. It still limits the manager, though, to only being able to earn 50% of what they were earning previous to that, so.
That's pretty good, then. Work more and pay less.
So we have to vote on...
We've got to hire you full-time, all the time. At that rate.
We get you to take less, now we can extend hours, can't we?
That could be our new theme.
That's what I'm here for.
Work more, pay less.
Takes two to agree, I guess.
That's right.
Three, actually.
His wife would have to agree, too.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract amendment as presented by Chip Key and the county attorney to amend Joel Mashburn, our interim county manager's contract as set forth.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
I was going to vote no, but because I want him to stay, but I guess that's...
Do it, do it. We'll have like a 4-1. All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. And that passes unanimously. Okay, we have anything else for open session before we go into closed session? Not, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A6, which is personnel.
So move. Second.
All right, we're in closed... everybody votes to go into closed session? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Okay, we are back after closed session. I do not believe we have any actions to take, even though we took a while. Anybody have any comments about anything?
About time to go home.
Yes, it is. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's vote somebody no. Who voted no? It's four to one to adjourn. Somebody wants to stay.
[laughing]